Good evening, and we'll call the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting of Monday, June 16th to order. I would ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. I'd move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean.
Mayor Given, I move that the Minister of City Council Meeting held May 20, 2014, be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? I don't see anybody ringing in, so they must be correct. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Rice.
I would move adoption of the agenda with the following additions. 9.5.1, Appointment of Weed Inspector for 2014. 9.5.2, T. 434-14, Community Knowledge Campus Synthetic Turf Sports Field. 9.5.3, Crystal Center Naming Rights. 9.5.4, Governance Symposium. 9.5.6, Aquitara Board Appointments.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice, for the motion with those additions. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We do have three delegations that let us know in advance that they would be here. And the first is from within our own organization. Ms. Kertscher Prusinka, Human Resources Manager. Janice, welcome.
Mayor Given and council, I'm here tonight to just share a short good news story with regard to our health and safety program here at the city of Grand Prairie. We have been participating in the Partnerships in Injury Reduction Program for over 10 years. And our certifying partner is the Alberta Municipal Health and Safety Association. So with that program, we're required to pass an audit every year, and every three years an external audit. Happy to report that our external audit in 2013 scored us an 89%, which means that we maintain our certificate of recognition. I was also, just recently got in the mail, this particular award from AMSA, and it is in recognition of our municipality's commitment to health and safety training. So I'll just read the first paragraph of that letter. Every year, AMSA provides recognition awards to municipalities for their commitment to providing health and safety training to our members. Please find enclosed a plaque in recognition of the city of Grand Prairie's outstanding commitment to ensuring that its employees have received appropriate occupational health and safety training. So it's one more small trophy to add to our cupboard upstairs, so I just wanted to share that with council.
Great, thanks very much, Janice. Certainly something that... Congratulations to our HR team and the entire organization. I know from City Manager Greg, all the directors and all of our staff, health and safety is obviously paramount, and it's great to see that recognized. The next up was representatives from the South Peace Regional Archives, and I see at least a few folks that I recognize from the archives. It's not because they're dusty. Mary, you have a team with you today?
I do.
Okay, welcome. Just allow you to get organized there. Okay, so while we're just getting organized, I know that folks at home can't see you yet while we're getting your computer set up, but maybe, Mary, if you want to introduce your team or whoever's going to take the lead.
Mayor Given, members of council first. Thank you for allowing us to make our presentation here this evening. My name is Lane Borstad. I am chairman of the South Peace Regional Archives Society, and I have with me this evening Charlie Pensen, who is chairman of the South Peace Regional Archives, Friends of the Archives. And the Friends of the Archives kind of access our foundation as our fundraising wing, so that's why he's here. And also with me is Mary Noding, who's our executive director of the Archives. And beside me, Leslie Gordon, who is our archivist. Okay? Maybe I'll just go ahead in the interest of time for everybody. In May of this year, we sent a letter to the city council expressing our interest in the South Montrose site as a future site for the regional archives. Tonight, I'd like to, or we would like to continue that discussion just a little bit with some additional information for you and to present an update on what we've been up to and where we're going, and to share with you some of our preliminary plans that we have towards our goal of a new facility for the Archives. I guess stated very simply, our goal is a new archives facility for Grand Prairie and the South Peace Region, and a building built specifically on the Montrose site, recreating the look of the original Montrose School that was on that site and which probably many of the members around here went to, myself included. I think I was the last year that that building was standing was when I was there last. And we feel that this concept of recreating the original Montrose as an archives would provide a nice focus and a focal point for the city's downtown. It would add to the cultural, it'd add another cultural facility to that sort of public and cultural hub that's kind of grown up there with the Montrose site, and certainly complement the existing gallery, library, and Center for Creative Arts that are in that area. And it would also then increase the exhibition and programming opportunities of all four organizations, the library, the art gallery, the Center for Creative Arts, and the new archives. And, you know, it would do other things as well, and I won't go into all of them, but bringing people into the city, family and academic researchers and whatnot into the city. And it would also provide kind of an ongoing interpretive site for that part of the city in terms of...
Sorry.
I'm losing my team already. They're abandoning me. And so it would provide us, you know, with an interpretive site for that area and for the history of that area and the region as a whole. The project itself is certainly supported by the South Peace Regional Archives, the SPRA, and the Friends of the Archives. But because it is so very site-specific, we need to come to you for the next stage, I guess, and that's to get the approval from the city or at least some recognition from the city that we should go ahead with some further planning on that site. So what I'd like to do is I'd like, Mary, to give you a bit of a history of the Archives itself, and then I'll ask Leslie to kind of fill you in on why that building and that site, and then I'll turn it all over to Charlie to do the pitch. Okay, Mary?
So in this 100th anniversary year, I'm sure we've all seen how beneficial it is to have an archives, so that there's material ready to do things like the little memory lane booklet, and I'm sure you've also seen the photographs and the displays in the foyer here. And so we just want to thank the city for funding us over the last 15 years. It's because of municipal funding that we can operate. So just a bit of background on the Archives. We were formed in January 2000 as a project of the Grand Prairie Museum, and we were funded by the city and the county of Grand Prairie. At the time, we had one half-time staff and three bays of archival storage in the museum. And over the past 15 years, we've received over about 600 collections plus a lot of small things, and our storage now takes up 20 times what we started with. And so you can see that we're also using space at the Grand Prairie Museum that they could use as well. We've progressed from that half-time staff to 2.4 staff, and we've been able to diversify our funding. We've got two more municipal partners plus we've been able to raise more of our budget from grants and from service fees and selling archival products. So now, of course, I've lost my space, so I'm going to have to... There we go. Okay, so we've really benefited from being in a city-owned facility, but as a creditable archives in Alberta and as an award-winning archives, we feel that it's time to move on to the next level of professionalism.
Thank you, Mary. Leslie, if you would maybe take it from there and talk a little bit about the Archives' specific requirements.
So one of the first requirements and issues that we have at our current space is the lack of space. We've been experiencing steady growth since our inception 15 years ago, and the happy consequence of that is that we're beginning to be stretched for space, and we can't accommodate all of the staff and volunteers and researchers that we would like to or that we need to. And this results in the researchers getting the impression that they're in the way and interrupting us when they come in to do research, and that's not the impression we want to leave with them. It also limits the number of projects we can have volunteers working on. We have a lot of people who are interested in helping the Archives, but we simply can't accommodate all of them. And during the same period that we've been expanding, the collections at the Grand Prairie Museum have also been growing, and they would greatly benefit from being able to use the space that we currently occupy. Secondly, to take care of the records, which is our primary goal, to move onwards as a professional Archives, we need to have better control over the conditions in our storage room. We need to have good ventilation, temperature and humidity controls, protection from harmful fumes, et cetera, et cetera. We also need a storage area that's away from public spaces to keep the records safe. And finally, with visibility and identity, our current location, we've taken this photograph very creatively to emphasize the regional Archives portion, but being in the museum, we are quite hidden in the back corner. A lot of people don't know that we exist, that we're there, and being tucked away in the back implies that we're unimportant, that we're irrelevant and unneeded, which is certainly not the case. As we're often confused with the museum, a separate building would allow us to increase awareness of who we are and what we do and why we are necessary. So the Montrose building that we are proposing to recreate, which would be steel, concrete, and brick, would be a very functional building for the Archives and would address these issues that I've just outlined, as well as provide a foundation for future growth, because it is more space than we currently need right now, but would give us expansion room for, we hope, the next 100 years.
I'm more optimistic. 100 years is a long time. Thank you. What I'd like to do now is ask Charlie to present to you some of the work we've been doing towards the concept of the new gallery and explain just what it is we're looking at. Charlie, would you like to?
Thank you, Lane, and I'd like to thank Mayor Given and council for hearing our presentation. I'm used to being on the other side, listening to them and trying to balance everybody's needs, and so I know what you're going through. I want to tell you I have a long history in this area. My mother and her entire family, parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles, came here from the Ottawa Valley in 1912, and they settled beside what is now the Bear Creek Golf Course, which was a long ways out of town at that time. So they moved into Grand Prairie in 1917 so the children could be in school, and I want to tell you that my mother is in the front row of that picture, the fourth from the left. And so she was one of the first in the first class in that brand-new school, and Lane Borstad was one of the last there, so we have it all covered. Yeah, we have it all covered. But my involvement began with the South Peace Regional Archives in April of this year, and I think Mary's seen me poking around trying to do some research down there, and she was helping me, and she seemed that I had an interest in it. And so when they formed the Friends of the South Peace Regional Archives, I was asked to join, and I'm happy to do that and put my shoulder to the wheel to see what I can do to help. And I quickly realized that after 15 years, the growth of the South Peace Regional Archives really has meant that we do need a new facility, as has already been stated. We think the best solution is a purpose-built facility with the appropriate foreloads and environmental controls for professional Archives. Our preferred plan, as already been stated, is to recreate that Montrose School, and we have it there. It's in the background. The old courthouse is in the foreground. And to recreate it, and it was designed and built by Charles Spencer, a founding father of Grand Prairie and also of the Grand Prairie Public Library. This project would only be relevant on or near its original site, and we'll have a proposal to show you on that, which is in the South Montrose site. So we're proposing a partnership with the city in hopes that it will lead to a location next to the Montrose Culture Centre facing west beside the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie. And you'll see it in yellow there where we are proposing that site. We're familiar with the new community group funding policy, and we're working closely with the administration so that your guidelines are followed. We believe this plan fits the city's vision for the South Montrose site as a culture and public service hub and would provide an attractive focal point for the downtown area. These plans have been taken from the Archives from the Charles Spencer drawings from 1917 and rebuilt by Bert Leland, a structural engineer. We've had him do that for us. Built out of steel, concrete, and brick, it would make an excellent archives. We have had preliminary talks with our Member of Parliament, Chris Warkington, MLAs Wayne Drysdale and Everett McDonald, and we're confident of their support. They certainly are interested in support of the concept and also in applying for federal and provincial grants. If the city approves the project, we will be requesting involvement from the other municipalities who Mary mentioned are part of our team as well, whose records are housed in the Archives. We also feel this project would be supported by the community, many of whom are residents that attended the school in their elementary years, as already been mentioned. So I just want to conclude our presentation this evening by telling you that since its inception, the Friends of the South Peace Regional Archives have been active in pursuing the goal of providing a new facility which will address those needs. We have discussed with a structural engineer firm and developed a preliminary plan for the site. We have obtained preliminary estimates regarding the cost of this new facility, and we are now at the stage where we are looking for a site. Before we can proceed with funding requests and grants, we need to have a site secured and project plans drawn up, and we want to begin that process as soon as possible. And we know that you will need to be talking to your administration regarding what we're proposing, and we understand that. But we do ask that you look favorably on our request for land for the project that we have presented so that the South Peace Regional Archives can continue to gather, preserve the rich heritage that our community has provided over the last 100 years, and we can move forward. So I want to thank you very much for your attention, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on our proposal.
Thanks very much for the presentation, Lane. Is that everything from the group? Okay, sure. So any questions for the delegation? Councillor McLean, I think is first in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of questions. Normally, how, of course, I'm not sure, the Archives' percentage of federal and provincial funding would be for grants of a site like this? What would normally be evolved? Charlie, you would probably maybe have a better idea in the federal?
Well, it has to, it's going to be part of the new infrastructure program in discussions with the MP. That's what we understand, and of course, that's a cooperation project with the province, and it goes to the municipality. So we might be back talking to you again for site-specific grants, you know, in regard to what the federal government have for infrastructure money. And we know that there's a long list that you'll be looking at, but we think our site is about $3 to $4 million. It's substantial, but not big by a lot of projections, and we would also like to try to raise money in the community, but Archives is sort of one of those things that the public don't really get their head around a bit, and so we think that we need a large portion to come from the federal and provincial governments.
Okay, just a remainder question.
So, Councillor McLean?
I'm seeing your outline for wanting that area, but just say if something developed and you weren't in that area, you were in that same area, but maybe north or somewhere, that still fit in the plan if you're still in the lot? You're not, depending on how they develop? Like, are you site-specific, or can it be on the other side of somewhere else there?
I guess, sorry, I'll try to answer that. The site-specific nature of it adds to the sort of historic value and whatnot of it. And there is kind of a synergy between the art gallery and the Archives, particularly because of the both preserve and exhibit works together. So there's certainly a synergy in the operation side of it, and there's an advantage, I think, in the historical side of it. To answer your question, would it work or not? I guess we'd have to, we would both have to look at it and see what you're implying.
I'm just saying, like, instead of south, you're in the north. Just say that happened.
I wouldn't want to say no. Because I...
Just asking that question, that's all.
I think, I mean, preferably, we'd like it as close to the original site as possible, but we know that there are constraints.
See another in the queue, Councillor Logan.
Thank you. I hesitate to admit that I attended school there, and it's not where you propose it to be, of course, as you said. That was a fairly spacious building. What are you, the space is excess to your needs? What else are you going to be doing with the space available? Are you going to hold it for expansion of the Archives?
It is, it is more space than we need right at the beginning, and so we will be looking for ways to use that space, whether it's with partners or renting out facilities. But we also think that a new and modern Archives will attract other corporate and municipal partners as well, so that we will have the space then to take on other partners who need archival work done.
Mary, if I could just add to that, one of the tasks that's been struck for the Friends of the Archives is trying to build awareness in the communities, and there's a lot of material out there that has not come in. And we think that by traveling throughout the area and making presentations to groups that we'll see an increase, and we're hoping we will, because there's a lot of really interesting history. I just had a, somebody found a diary of somebody in the glass that would cap it from 1932 to 1966, and I'm going to be bringing it over to Mary. And, you know, that's the kind of things, I think, there's a lot of hidden treasures out there. We think that we really haven't tapped what's out there in terms of archival material.
Could I just add to that as well? Please, don't mind. It's not, not good to measure what our needs are based on what we currently have, because we don't have facilities for researchers, we don't have facilities for the volunteers. We have a very cramped kind of space. So if we move into a new space, we would have the ability to have things that a normal Archives has, such as a reading room or a research room and whatnot. So, yes, we need space, maybe not all of it initially, but I could see us growing into it fairly quickly at the rate that the city is expanding. Any other questions for the delegation? Maybe along the same lines, has the Archives undertaken a space needs analysis to say, you know, for an Archives of your size today that should grow to this in the future, here's the components that you need, and here's how many square feet you need per use, I guess? A functional study, I guess?
We have done, we've purchased publications that are based on building new Archives, and so we've used that as a way to measure how much space that we need for certain functions.
Thanks very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Was there anything else that you wanted to share?
Thank you very much for allowing us to make our presentation.
Thanks very much. And just so that you know, our delegation business is handled at the end of our agenda, so you're more than welcome to stay and enjoy the entire meeting, and you'll find out what council does. Or you can watch online when you go home or check the newspaper afterwards, or follow up with the administration. Thank you. So as I said before, there were three delegations that we knew about. The next one that we had on the agenda for today was Mr. Baron Mans from Aquitara. Baron?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Given and members of council. I wanted at this time to share some information about what Aquitara is doing to accommodate growth throughout the city. And so there's, I think I have a presentation queued up. And, next slide, please. And so our commitment really is to find the most effective way to accommodate shareholder growth, and to do that for each of the three partners, and also to meet all provincial regulations with respect to potable water and environmental stewardship. Next, please. So if we look back over time and see the, these are new meter installations, so the rate of each new service customer, that we saw some rapid growth through the middle of the last decade and then sharp decline, and then continued upswing, and note that, again, most of the customers that we serve are within the city of Grand Prairie. The map, actually, this doesn't show the colors quite as well, maybe it's a little better on your screen, but overviews our water infrastructure, where we have a number of different features throughout to provide that service. The colors on the map indicate the various pressure zones that we have. Each would have its own reservoirs and pump houses to meet the various demands throughout the city. Next slide, please. So in terms of projects that we have to improve the water system and accommodate continued growth, we're currently working on obtaining rights-of-way for a new transmission line that would connect the airport reservoir in the west end of the city, again, supporting growth of commercial industrial development in the west end. We're also pursuing a new corridor for a water transmission line that would run from our plant in the south of the city and then up Highway 40 to about 68th Avenue. And the largest single project, which would benefit all of our shareholders and customers, would be improvements to river facilities that would include protection of the riverbank itself, expansion of the raw water storage ponds that we have there, and a new water intake. So those are projects that we have in the works that we're undertaking to accommodate growth within the city with improvements to the water system. With respect to wastewater infrastructure, again, we collect it, the wastewater from source, and take it back to our plant for treatment and then return ultimately to the river itself. The colors in this map show the various catch basins for major trunk sewers within the city. The kind of crossed hat, pink and green, one within the downtown area is the oldest infrastructure in the city, and that'll become an item that we continue to work with the city as it looks to intensify development and redevelopment within the city and the neighborhoods to the north. Was there anything else that you wanted to share?
Thank you very much for allowing us to make our presentation.
Thanks very much. And just so that you know, our delegation business is handled at the end of our agenda. So you're more than welcome to stay and enjoy the entire meeting and you'll find out what council does. Or you can watch online when you go home or check the newspaper afterwards, but, or follow up with administration. Thank you. So as I said before, there were three delegations that we knew about. The next one that we had on the agenda for today was Mr. Baron Mans from Aquaterra. Baron?
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Given and members of council. I wanted at this time to share some information about what Aquaterra is doing to accommodate growth throughout the city. And so there's, I think I have a presentation queued up. And next slide, please. And so our commitment really is to find the most effective way to accommodate shareholder growth and to do that for each of the three partners. And also to meet all provincial regulations with respect to potable water and environmental stewardship. Next, please. So if we look back over time and see the, these are new meter installations, so the rate of each new service customer, that we saw some rapid growth through the middle of the last decade and then sharp decline and then continued upswing. And note that, again, most of the customers that we serve are within the city of Grand The, the map, actually this doesn't show the colors quite as well, maybe it's a little better on your screen, but overviews our water infrastructure, where we have a number of different features throughout to provide that service. The colors on the map indicate the various pressure zones that we have. Each would have its own reservoirs and pump houses to meet the various demands throughout the city. Next slide, please. So in terms of projects that we have to improve the water system and accommodate continued growth, we're currently working on obtaining rights-of-way for a new transmission line that would connect the airport reservoir in the west end of the city. Again, supporting growth of commercial industrial development in the west end. We're also pursuing a new corridor for a water transmission line that would run from our plant in the south of the city and then up Highway 40 to about 68th Avenue. And the largest single project which would benefit all of our shareholders and customers would be improvements to river facilities that would include protection of the riverbank itself, expansion of the raw water storage ponds that we have there and a new water intake. So those are projects that we have in the works that we're undertaking to accommodate growth within the city with improvements to the water system. With respect to wastewater infrastructure, again, we, we collect it, the wastewater from source and take it back to our, our plant for treatment and then return ultimately to the river itself. The colors in this map show the various catch basins for major trunk sewers within the city. The kind of crossed hat, pink and green one within the downtown area is the oldest infrastructure in the city. And that'll become an item that we continue to work with the city as it looks to intensify development and redevelopment within the city and the neighborhoods to the, to the north. The brown area is, again, a catchment area for growth and development in the west end of the city that's a focus. Next slide, please. So the, the primary impediment to continued growth in, from a servicing perspective in the west end and the industrial, commercial lands that it would support would be the construction of a gap in the 116th Street trunk sewer that currently exists between existing O'Brien Lake subdivision and Center West subdivision. So the right-of-way that we've just now secured winds its way, it doesn't quite follow 116th Street, but winds its way through unsubdivided undeveloped lands to connect those two neighborhoods, O'Brien Lake and Center West, and provide for sanitary sewage services that includes the annexation areas as well. Next slide, please. So the, the green in this chart shows the lands to be serviced by that 116th Street trunk. And so it includes, well, certainly north of 84th Avenue, lands to the west. South of there includes lands both east and west and includes some existing neighborhoods as well. So it would service future west-end commercial and industrial. It would accommodate the annexation area. There's some additional residential lands that are serviced by it. Ultimately, it's intended to connect by force main, the Clermont Lagoon and provide treatment at our plant and would become a regional project under the Building Canada Fund that's part of council's agenda later on, with a total cost of just over 28 million So the, the ultimate accommodation of wastewater, both in the city and in Clermont, would be that 116th Street alignment. In an interim measure, we've identified a force main that would go from the Clermont Lagoon to connect to an existing sewer along 108th Street as a way of accommodating growth before that 116th Street trunk is completed. This force main would not have any impact on city development. It would, it becomes an Aquaterra responsibility. In the same way that Aquaterra initiated the upgrading of the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate growth primarily within the city over the long term, we have that same obligation to do that within the Clermont area. There's been some suggestion that if, if somehow this force main wasn't built, that it would halt development in Clermont because of the need to improve wastewater treatment. And that's not the case. The obligation to provide wastewater services is Aquaterra's, not the county's. And, and so we would take steps to, to meet those growth needs as we would in the city. The alternatives to this force main would be more expensive and less desirable and in the long term effectively be a waste of money and would reduce the amount of capital that would be available for, for other investments in, in projects. So this interim force main would, would see sewage from Clermont transmitted off-peak periods to our plant for treatment there. And again, would, would not have any impact on development within that sanitary basin within the city. Thanks. So what we've done over, over the years is ensure that growth can occur and to find ways of doing that on an interim basis where that's been needed. This particular slide shows quarter sections essentially that have developed and grown before the downstream trunk sewers were available to connect to. That one next to the, the heading is there is supposed to be Crystal Lake. So over time, the trunk network in the city has been developed by development, if that's occurred within particular developing areas, but otherwise by Aquaterra. And so those green lines that are shown there are segments of trunk sewer mains that we've built recently, beginning with the 88th Street trunk to accommodate growth on the east end of the city, 68th Avenue trunk sewer that ran along the golf course lands, most recently the downstream end of the 116th Street trunk sewer that went through Grand Banks. And then again, the eventual final completion of that 116th trunk sewer. So our, our job is to accommodate growth and to do that as easily as, as can occur and to do it in a way that accommodates immediate growth even if the long-term infrastructure isn't available at the time. So when we look at the various initiatives that we currently have underway to accommodate growth within the city, it includes long-range updates to our water and wastewater master plans that should be completed by the end of this year and the list of those short-term capital projects that total about 111 million dollars that are underway or, or planned for the short term. So with respect to the, the new Building Canada Fund, there is a regional component to that and two projects have been identified. One is the 116th Street trunk sewer in Force Main. And the second one is the upgrades at the river with storage capacity, intakes and bank protection. And those are valued at, at just under 48 million dollars. And if successful with that Building Canada Fund, could potentially see about two-thirds of that granted from other levels of government and would have significant impact in reducing the long-term increases in wastewater rates within the city and water and also significantly reduce our, our debt. And so we're, we're fully supportive of the committee direction to support those two projects that's later on in your agenda. So that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions with respect to growth and Aquaterra.
Great. Thanks very much, Mr. Mans. Any questions for Baron? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Mans. Just a question on 108th, where you'd be bringing an extra load of sewer in, you're saying there won't be no, can't hurt the city at all with any development or anything. And before you started planning this, did you talk to the city? Did you try to say what you were going to do before you RFP'd or just a couple of questions too there?
Sure. We identified a number of, of alternatives to accommodate sewage in, in Smith. And as, as those plans were finalized and, and the preferred alternatives made known, those were shared with the city as well.
Okay, so you were quite firm that Aquaterra talked to the city, that they were going to have an RFP to do this 108th and everything was worked out?
We had identified the preferred alternative and we're taking steps to move towards the next step and involve the city at that time.
Okay. Any further questions for Baron? Don't see anybody else in the queue. No other questions. Thanks very much, Baron.
Okay. Thanks for your time this evening.
So as I said, this is the delegation portion of our agenda. It's an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing. We do have a couple of public hearings a little bit later on. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter? I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda and we move on to public hearings. And our first public hearing item is item 6.1, Land Use Bylaw Amendment C1260-2 to correct inconsistencies and errors. Look for an introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The Municipal Government Act requires a public hearing prior to second reading of any land use by law amendment and advertising of the date, time, and location of that public hearing. Unfortunately, advertising was not completed as required under the act. The recommendation to recess, so we will be recommending that we recess this public hearing to give administration time to complete the advertising requirement. The recommendation is that the public hearing for land use by law amendment C1260-12 be recessed until Monday, June 30th, 2014 at 6:30 PM in City Council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So a public hearing that there's some additional public notification advertising that's required. And so administration's requesting a recess, to be specific, recess of the public hearing. Counselor Rice?
I would move that the public hearing for land use by law amendment C1260-12 be recessed until Monday, June 30th, 2014 at 6:30 PM in City Council chambers.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Before we vote on that, I just want to confirm, is there anybody who had arrived, was attending tonight intending to speak to this land use by law amendment or change? I didn't think so, but I just wanted to confirm just in case there was anybody who had shown up and we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to speak. So I will call for the vote on Counsel Rice's motion to recess the public hearing to June 30th. I'll call for the vote now. Thank you. That motion carries and 6.2, I think we have something similar. So I'll call this public hearing to order and again, an introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, that's correct. The Municipal Government Act requires a public hearing prior to second reading of any land use by law amendment and advertising of the date, time, and location of the public hearing. Unfortunately, again, advertising was not completed as required under the act. We recommend that the public hearing for land use by law amendment C1260-10 be recessed until Monday, June 30th, 2014 at 6:30 PM in City Council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, before we have any motions, I'll do it this time. Is there anybody who attended tonight intending to speak to this land use by law amendment? Didn't see anybody, so we're open for motions to recess if that's council's wish. Counselor Logan?
Yes, I'd like to move that the public hearing for land use by law amendment C1260-10 be recessed until Monday, June 30th at 6:30 PM in City Council chambers.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Open for discussion and debate. Counsel Rice, I see you in the queue. Are you looking for a discussion and debate? No? Okay. If there's nobody in the queue then I'll call for the vote on that motion to recess. Thank you. Okay. And so that public hearing has also been recessed and we'll move to 6.3. We're going to have a public hearing tonight, one way or another. I'd call this public hearing to order on bylaw C1260-9 and look for an introduction from administration. Yeah, the gods of advertising shone down on me.
We are recommending that land use bylaw C1260-9, which is an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given second and third readings. Actually, I can call this up. A land use bylaw amendment application has been submitted to the city for, to change the zoning designation of part of the northwest quarter of Section 11 Township 71, Range 6 West of the 6 from urban reserve to direct control DC 12. Only part of the site is being rezoned because the site has not yet been subdivided into a discrete lot. The lot sites located at the northwest corner or southwest corner of 106th Street and 68th Avenue in the Stone Ridge neighborhood is across 68th Avenue from the CKC site. It's bounded on the west by vacant 8.1 hectare institutional site that's often referred to as the Nate Site, although it's currently owned by Grand Prairie Community College. The area to the south, I bumped my map, the area to the south across 60, across 66th Avenue is planned for low-density residential housing. And further to the south is a 9.2 hectare airport navigational beacon site. To the east are commercial and multifamily residential sites which are currently undeveloped. The Harvey's Restaurant is the only commercial development in, in place at this time. The Southwest Area Structure Plan, which you can see on your screens, the site is actually designated commercial on map seven of the area structure plan and the proposed DC 12 zoning is consistent with that designation. The site is designated as commercial in the Stone Ridge Outline Plan. I don't know why that red square moved, but it did. A comparison of map four of the Stone Ridge Outline Plan with the Southwest Area Structure Plan shows that the ASP is consistent with the, the OP is consistent with the ASP in both the types and locations of the various land use planning, land uses planned for the area. Map 12 of the Stone Ridge Outline Plan identifies the site as future direct control. In addition, Section 4.3 of the Outline Plan states it's the intent of the plan that a site-specific direct control district be submitted for this site to accommodate the development of a hotel. Proposed bylaw is therefore consistent with the Stone Ridge Outline Plan. When the Outline Plan was adopted, it was intended that the commercial strip along 68th Avenue would develop in accordance with the CS district regulations as they existed in the land use bylaw of the time. The CS district is actually now called CG in the recently adopted land use bylaw, but the former and current districts are very similar and neither one allowed a hotel. The OP envisions that a hotel could be developed on the site to take advantage of proximity to the CKC site and proximity to Highway 40. However, it was determined that the CA district, which permits hotels, was too intense and provided for uses that were not considered compatible with the surrounding area and not consistent with the vision for the larger area. As a result, the inclusion of a hotel in a site-specific direct control district was considered the most appropriate way to regulate development in this area. The site is currently zoned urban reserve in the land use bylaw. As you can see, this map is very, is very much consistent with the area structure plan map and the outline plan map. The area to the north across 68th Avenue is public service for the CKC site. The area to the east is direct control 11, which is a direct, a different direct control, very much in line with the CG zoning, but it allowed four-story office buildings. In summary, the commercial nature of the proposed direct control district is consistent with the southeast area structure plan and the Stone Ridge, or sorry, the southwest area structure plan and the Stone Ridge Outline Plan. The inclusion of hotel as a use is also consistent with the outline plan and the district is very similar to the adjacent DC 11 and CG commercial districts. Developer has adopted architectural design guidelines for other commercial lots in the Stone Ridge area and has indicated an intent to register them on this site when it is subdivided. These guidelines, together with the high level of development control that the city maintains through the direct control provisions, should ensure that development in this site provides a high standard of appearance in design, befitting the high profile of the area. Therefore, planning and developments is recommending that C1260-9 be adopted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. So are there any questions for administration from council at this point? Counselor McLean?
Mayor Given, just a quick question on permitted uses and discretionary uses under the CG, which you're changing it. I see down here in 9.2 you have permitted uses via liquor store, so go ahead and build a liquor store. Okay. And what do you mean by the difference between the permitted and discretionary use? How distinguished, what change you're going to make?
Through the chair, I guess, in, in provincial legislation, bylaws distinguish between permitted and discretionary uses. Permitted are allowed as of right depending that all the requirements of a bylaw are met. Discretionary uses may be approved or not approved even though they, even though they meet the requirements of a bylaw, the development authority can turn down a discretionary use. If they meet all the requirements, it can be refused if it, yes. The issue here is because this is direct control, there are no permitted uses. Direct control, essentially everything is discretionary, nothing is permitted. So again, that, that's why I indicate that with direct control, you do, the city doesn't maintain a much higher level of development authority than would with a, a number of permitted uses. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mayor.
I don't see any other questions for administration, so I'd ask for, I'd open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing and anybody who'd like to come forward to speak in favor or support of the application. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and administration. My name is Wade Greentree and I'm here on behalf of Stone Ridge Properties. And I have Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering here with me as well. I'd like to thank you for considering our rezoning application and I'd also like to thank Mr. Welton for all his work and assistance in helping us prepare the appropriate zoning for this land. We're rezoning this piece of land for two main reasons. First is, as he indicated, the outline plan dictates that at some point in the future this land be rezoned to a DC zoning. And second, we have actually sold the piece of land and as part of our due diligence in turning the title over to the purchaser, we need to rezon the land as a condition of the sale. The zoning we're proposing accommodates a variety of uses and is a zoning we feel is appropriate for the area. And I appreciate your consideration of this rezoning request and thanks for listening and be happy to answer any questions you have after Scott's done his part of it. and be happy to answer any questions you have after Scott's done his part of it.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I don't have too much to say here, mostly just to address the fact that we've dealt with all the servicing issues on this. Most of the, most of this is already contemplated through the Stone Ridge Outline Plan, so as far as sanitary water, storm sores, transportation, everything complies with the existing documents. This is just kind of a formality of completing everything. There is a lot of development going on in the area, so we kind of rushed through this to make sure that we caught, caught the development that was occurring. So the land uses were looked at very, in a very detailed manner by my client and Wade as well, to ensure that, try and catch, I guess, both sides, just make sure it meets the city's needs and also the developments. There, as of the end of this construction season, there will be basically roads constructed fully around this site, so we don't expect any issues as far as accesses or anything that would be required from a construction and infrastructure perspective. From the engineering side, we have no concerns with this, and everything seems to be proceeding nicely. So again, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for the delegation?
Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a direct question maybe to Wade. It's going to be broken up to maybe different units of commercially wise on this property, like are we looking at strip malls? Are we, what's the intent? Like you're hoping to develop there by selling the land? You got a buyer, what's the intent?
Thank you for the question, Council McLean. At this point, I've spoken with the purchaser, and he's indicated at this point he's more interested in keeping his one big site and building and leasing out. Of course, that could change. So at this point, there's no firm plans in place. I've been working with some other potential purchasers in the past, and then he purchased it, so I've been putting him in touch with those people. But there's no definitive plans at this point.
So just one more question, Mayor Given, then I'm done. Because this is a main visual area for two high schools, and I'm looking at liquor stores. And is there anything, you guys have an issue if there was amendment or something made that they passed that about liquor store across from a high school? In the corner on that land?
At that point in time, you guys, as he indicated, it's discretionary use, there would be chance for administration to comment on it at that point. As far as what the purchaser wants to do with it, I can't speak on his behalf. As a developer, we would consider, we'd talk about it, but I'm not sure what the answer would be at this point.
Any further questions for the delegation? Don't see anybody else in the queue. Gentlemen, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
So I'll ask if there's anybody else that was here to speak in favor of the application? I don't see anybody moving forward. Was there anybody that was here to speak in opposition to the application? One more time, was there anybody here that was intending to speak in opposition to the request to rezone to the DC 12 district? And again, I don't see anybody coming forward. So I will close the presentation submission portion of the agenda and look for motions arising. Councilor Rice?
I would move second reading of bylaw C 1260-9, adding a new DC 12 site-specific direct control district and rezone the urban reserve to DC 12 site-specific direct control district. And this is an amendment to the existing land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Rice. So that motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just have a question for administration. It's direct control, but we've seen how it goes. There's two liquor stores around the high schools now. Would we, you're going to make the decision that go ahead and build a liquor store, but how's it working? If I made an amendment to have, hopefully, if it passed, a liquor store on that site, is that out of protocol? Is that okay?
So, so Councilor McLean, you can certainly move to amend second reading, and I'll answer the question. Because if you're looking for questions for administration, we're in a discussion and debate on the motion.
Yes, okay.
A motion to amend is possible. We've had that on second reading before. And so you don't have to have a specific amendment that you're looking to make.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment on this. So I'll wait for discussion maybe, or I'd like to make an amendment? Okay, I'd like to make amendment that, on this parcel of land, that there be no liquor stores allowed on, on the bylaw C 1269 for changing over to site-specific direct control.
So just to help you out, Council McLean, is your intention to remove liquor store as one of the identified uses in?
On this site, yes.
So I believe that should be in order, if possible. So we'll take that as an amendment. Councilor Logan?
With regard to the intent of the amendment, why would you be limiting it to liquor stores and not to other licensed premises?
Our area being awfully young, lots of, lots of liquor stores since the last one closed, and this is two high schools, and this is a main intersection right across, where you say Papa's Liquor Store, come on in, discount for beer. I think it's to be a direct, I know what you're saying, but I think, I know what you're saying, but liquor, we have a lot of stores in the city, and we're, I'm looking at maybe not having everywhere a liquor store, especially across from a high school.
Any discussion or debate on Council McLean's amendment? If there isn't any, I'll speak. I'm opposed to the amendment. The uses identified are all discretionary uses. The applicant isn't allowed to, as I understand it, under this land use zone, any of those uses would have to come for approval from administration or council. And so I certainly don't, so I believe council will have oversight, but I appreciate the fact that there's, there is flexibility for the purchaser. I'm sure that they're looking to have as wide a range of land uses as possible, so. And I don't believe that in some of the other, I would stand to be corrected, but I'd be surprised if some of the other zoning that's immediately adjacent doesn't already allow liquor stores as discretionary uses at least. So something across the street has that potential as well. So I'm being flagged by administration. Did I say something that's incorrect, Mr. Welton? If I did, please correct it.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out, the, the way the district is written, the development officers, officers would be the approving authority, not council in this case. Thank you.
So my point still stands, the landowner doesn't get to just go ahead and put those in. There is some oversight approved, sorry, in the process, and additionally, the land use zone that's right next door, I believe, would still support that liquor store. So I believe it'd be inequitable to restrict it on this parcel of land when the parcel immediately across the street was still available. Anybody else for discussion or debate? Council McLean?
And you're exactly right, Mayor Given, it doesn't, and actually about three, four parcels up from the Harvey's, they're going to have a liquor store. And there is one on the east side over by the Treasury Branch, and this is directly on the intersection across from the high school. So you're right, we would be looking at that, but that is council's tool of development, and we have a choice to curtail certain development or to go ahead.
Any further discussion or debate on the amendment? So we'll call for, this is going to be a vote just on Council McLean's amendment to strike that one use from the, the uses identified in the DC zone. Any discussion, sorry, I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, so we'll move back on to second reading. Council Logan? Council Logan, sure, we'll make sure that the vote is recorded correctly, so we'll call for a revote then. So this is a revote on Council McLean's amendment. Thank you. And that motion is not carrying. And so we will move on to the second reading, as originally proposed. So we have second reading. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Again, I don't see anybody else in the queue. One last opportunity, council? Nobody in the queue, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed, and that finishes all the business for that public hearing, and in fact, that is all of our public hearings for tonight. We had no items of unfinished business, and that would take us right into our report section of our agenda. Land use bylaw amendment C 1260-11, rezoning from RT to CC. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Thank you. Thanks, Council Clayton. Yes, we do have to do three readings of the bylaw. Thank you. That's sort of a basic thing. You'd think I'd remember that. Yeah, after two comes three. You're exactly right. Thanks very much, Council Clayton, for that catch. It's been a long day. So I'll look for a motion for third reading. Council Clayton?
So I'll give the third reading, that third reading will be given to bylaw C-1260-9, add new DC 12 site-specific direct control district, and rezone UR urban reserve D 12 site-specific direct control district being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Clayton, and thanks for that catch. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. Now we'll move on through unfinished business and outdoor reports, 8.1 land use bylaw amendment 1260-11, and an introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. A land use bylaw amendment has been submitted to the city of Grand Prairie. The proposed amendment would change the zoning of lots 7 and 8, block 2, Plan 1410 AC, from residential transition district to central commercial district. The parcel is located on the south side of 103rd Avenue to the west of 100th Avenue, which is also to the west of, to the east of Tim Horton's. And the recommendation is that bylaw C 1260-11 to amend the land use bylaw be given first reading, and Monday, July 14th, 2014, at 6:30 PM in City Council chambers be established as the date, the time, and location for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we need a motion for first reading to get this on. Have a motion for first reading. Councilor Logan?
Sure, I'll move first reading of bylaw C 1260-11, even first reading.
Thanks very much, Council Logan. Discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Logan, would you care to do date, time, and location? Your microphone's gone off. Sorry, Council Logan, your microphone went off there with the last.
There we go. Now I can go twice as loud. Monday, June 14th, 2014, at 6:30 PM in City Council chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Council Logan. Any discussion as to date, time, and location proposed for the public hearing? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a little housekeeping. I believe it was stated June 14th, but the actual reading says July 14th, so I just wanted to catch that before we voted, but I knew the intention.
Sure, for those that were working by their agenda, thank you. Thanks very much, Council Thompson. Move on to community business and 9.1, Community Growth Committee meeting from May 20th. Council O'Toole, was that your meeting?
Yes, it was, Mayor Given, and I recommend council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee meeting held May 20th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council O'Toole, anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Just the fact that we had a downtown infrastructure assessment, and we were looking at doing some work downtown, and we're just going to see how much work we actually have to do. Also, we did a temporary foreign worker program and regarding the food and service sector, and it was to ask you if you would write a letter on behalf with joint the small, mid-sized cities, to get a letter together for both federal and provincial backing to make this happen. Because Grand Prairie needs that temporary foreign work.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. So we'll move to 9.2, the Community Living Committee from May 20th. Council Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A number of motions coming from Community Living, May 20th meeting. First of all, I'd move the council to receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held May 20th, 2014. I did just notice one, I believe the presenter on the youth emergency shelter is Ms. T. Wald, not Walden. That was the only change that I picked up.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Did anyone note anything else that we needed to catch before we adopt those minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Council Radburn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council award neighborhood enhancement matching grants, too. First of all, Mission Height, Mission Neighborhood Association, the amount of $5,000 for the purchase and installation of four picnic tables in four parks in the neighborhood in accordance with the details of their proposal. Secondly, Pinnacle Neighborhood Association, an amount of $3,294.40 for the creation of a community garden in the green space adjacent to the intersection of Pinnacle Boulevard and Pinnacle Drive. And number three, Mountview Neighborhood Association, the amount of $5,000 for the concrete pad to create a base for an outdoor fitness park. A bit of a context for council and those who are watching tonight, this is a pot of money that's been set aside to support neighborhood associations. Three of the five active neighborhood associations actually chose to apply. We felt that the three who applied were excellent suggestions, projects. These projects can vary and can be in, to do with neighborhood planning, neighborhood improvements, neighborhood school partnerships, program development, capital equipment. And the other important note here is that the neighborhood association matches the monies that is granted, so it's a true partnership. And they can, they can do that by donation, cash, or volunteer labor. So it's really a partnership. It's the neighborhood association working with the city, and so this is the first, first time around for the availability of these matching grants, and I would encourage council to support them. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Council McLean?
Just, Council Radburn, I wasn't at that meeting. The pad for the fitness outside park, because I know like Towne and Grand Cash, they have one different areas, they have them structured in pilings in the ground, but not actually a pad to sit on. The reasoning was it'd be better to have them all on a pad.
Mr. Roth, do you want to speak to the details of the application?
Certainly. By installing it on a, on a concrete pad, it allows for better accessibility in terms of handicapped accessibility. So that is the intent, is to create a solid level, a level space to enable handicapped accessibility of, of some of the fitness-related equipment.
Thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Council Radburn, you'll have to.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I would move council approve the partnership with the Come Fly With Me Fund and the Pursuit of Excellence Committee to offer an additional award in the Come Fly With Me Legacy Fund name. So this was brought forward to Community Living by Community Foundation. At this point, they have been operationalized, operationalizing and awarding the scholarship on behalf of the Come Fly With Me Fund Endowment. So what this will look like in terms of the partnership is that annually, the Pursuit of Excellence Fund would receive a check from the Community Foundation in the amount of the interest of the endowment. The endowment's about $1,000, so depending upon interest rates, that would dictate how much money is sent to Pursuit of Excellence Fund. And the Pursuit of Excellence Committee will then organize how that will be awarded. Probably it would be a scholarship, just like our Bob Newfelt or Perky McCullough scholarships, but it would be another scholarship that we could award on an annual basis. And I think it's a great fit because I think that that's what the Pursuit of Excellence Committee does. It basically awards scholarships for, I guess, coach, official, volunteer, and athlete development, and they felt that we were in a
And they felt that we were in a better position to know the needs and to be the, I guess, the one shop center for applications. So, I think it's a good fit and a good partnership. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As we move along, I would move council adopt the community mobility, mobile plan, mobility plan, moving forward, a strategy for active transportation for Grand Prairie as presented. So, we did receive and the plan. We were quite impressed with the work that admin team and cross-department team has, has worked on and has provided to us. It comes with some strategies, some measures, and some recommendations. Those recommendations are in the plan to inform budget deliberations this fall. But as council is well aware, this was a priority, community mobility, community mobility plan was a priority in terms of move forward for our city. It's been good work by, not a silo, but a cross-department holistic look at it, and I think it will inform us both in terms of actions and how we resource those actions. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing in the queue, I'd just like to add my thanks to the administrative team who brought this together. I think it's going to have a significant impact to the benefit of Grand Prairie residents as it looks to encourage active modes of transportation and use of transit, and I look forward to seeing the results of budget, the recommendations come forward to budget so we can start to implement some. I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Councilor Redburn, you're not quite finished yet.
Thank you. One more. I'd move council endorse the name Maskwate as the official name of the North Bear Creek Park. Context here is that Maskwate means bear heart in woodland Cree. This name was developed through a naming pipe ceremony with the Grand Prairie Aboriginal Circle of Services, and we have our mayor and our administration were part of that discussion. So, really, in the spirit of the bear, and it's healing, it speaks to the spirit of the bear and its healing powers. And I think the location of the hospital had something to do with, with looking at that name as one that would, was a good fit for North Bear Creek Park. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Councilor Redburn, anything else you wanted to highlight?
Thank you. Just to let people know that we also had delegations from Grand Prairie Public Library, Peace Library System, Youth Emergency Shelter, Foundations for Families, and the Kool-Aid Society came to present updates in terms of some of the funding they received from the city. With respect to the Kool-Aid Society, they're having some challenge at the present time, and so just like council, we've asked the men to come back with some information in that regard and what supports we might be able to give in the short term to help them. That report is coming to committee tomorrow, so if council are interested, they're welcome to join us. And finally, the other thing on the agenda was the Junior Racquetball Championship Report. Administration reported on the championships and the partnership and the cooperation and the, the work, I guess, that was done for those championships that ended up to be extremely successful, and we've learned a lot in terms of template for hosting other events and championships at the Eastlake Center. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redburn. We'll move on to community safety committee from June 10. Councilor McLean, that was yours?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of community safety committee meeting held June 10, 2014.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like we have everything in order? Looks like we must, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council award tender T-40-552-14 for 2014 Trail Program, Nelson Institute, Nelson Sand and Gravel Limited, an amount of $648,177.43, excluding GST, as the lowest bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion...
Can I, can I revote?
No way.
So, we have a request for a revote to council member incorrectly voted, and that's fine. We'll, we'll do a revote, so I'll call for the vote again. Thank you. That motion carries. Still? I'll move on to nine point three point two. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move to council award tender T-31-434-14, CKC Site Grading Parking Lot and Road Upgrades to Nelson Sand and Gravel Limited, an amount of $3,885,345.52, excluding GST, as the lowest bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this motion? As council members will remember from the committee meeting, this essentially preps the site on the west side for the future sport field development. We have additional information coming on that later on. Also adds a significant number of new parking spaces, including some staff parking spaces further away from the building, and makes some geometric upgrades to some of the major intersections to improve their functionality. So, a pretty broad project that meets a lot of the needs that were identified in the CKC's parking and site transportation plan, as well as the needs for the new high school that'll be opening this fall. Is there any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor McLean, I think you're not off the hook yet already.
No. Thank you, Mayor Given. I move to council award tender T-14-552-14, Road Rehabilitation Overlay Program, 2014 Road Resurfacing to West Canseal Coating, Inc., an amount of $570,522.75, excluding GST, as the lowest bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor McLean, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. There's a couple of them, and one is the Trail Program Tender Award. This is not for all trails in the city. As you know, just before, it was announced about the North Bear Creek Park naming. That's additional monies that was put to make extension, so this is not the only. It's, well, part of it was, I seen there the other day, we were down the pavilion, and it's rehabilitating areas that are falling apart, and then there's one area of the trail where the roots are right through the pavement, and they're actually going to refix that in the park. So, it's very good that they're noticing a lot of areas that need to be fixed, and that was brought up on the committee. And as well, another one we've noticed is since the new high school has gone up, there's one entrance there where it's getting really iffy, and the school's not even open yet just from construction and swimmer users. So, part of that's going to be about relooking at different locations and timing for intersections. So, looking forward to that.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor McLean. That'd take us to the Corporate Services Committee meeting, and I think, Councilor O'Toole, you handled that meeting, didn't you?
Yes, I did, Mayor Given. I filled in for Councilor Doi Logan. I recommend that council receive the minutes for the Corporate Services Committee being held on June 10, 2014.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole?
Yeah, I got a couple things I'd like to talk about. 2014 Destruction of Municipal Records Recommendation, council authorized the destruction of all records listed on the attached sheet A, Schedule A, and that all records destroyed be properly listed and incorporated into the minutes of council, along with the signed affidavits as to witnessing of the destruction. And if I could just speak on that, previous years, I've been on the Archives Board, and some items have been what I felt should be maybe not destroyed. We've actually called the Archives Board over because of certain Freedom of Information Act that we haven't been able to destroy them, or I mean, we've destroyed them, but other stuff we've kept, and in this case, everything has been good to go.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? This is a regular annual piece of business, I believe.
Yes, it is.
I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole?
And I've got nine point four point two, the Aqua Terra Letter of Support for Build Canada Applications. Recommendation is council direct the mayor to write a letter of support for Aqua Terra's applications to build the Build Canada Fund, and that was discussed by Mr. Man, it's here this afternoon, or this morning. Evening. Been here a long day, sir.
It has been a long day. Started off this morning, afternoon, and then during the evening. Sure. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I didn't have the privilege of being at that meeting, but I just been wondering to myself, the question was brought up, if, I know before we were going to support this, we were going to maybe go back to administration, see if maybe we were applying for that fund, and if there may be a competition between the two. Was that brought up at the committee meeting, and if so, how was it addressed?
Councilor O'Toole, do you want to speak to that?
I was going to ask you if you'd want to fill that in.
Well, it was brought up at the meeting, and administration identified that there were separate pools of money, and Aqua Terra's would be for the regional projects, which any municipal projects that we would have would be specifically under the Small Communities Fund, so different pots of money that we'd be applying for, and I think that gave the committee the confidence to recommend this forward, and it is actually that specific item that I would also include in the letter when I drafted it, that our support is based on the fact that they'd be applying for those regional funds. Awesome. Thank you very much. Thanks, Councilor Thiessen, for the question. Councilman McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm glad Councilor Thiessen asked that question, because when it was tabled at the committee meeting, there was some just in a looking at things, but then at the FCM, out of the four resolutions they had to vote on, one of them was for Building Canada Fund, and how to get rid of tape, and how to make things work in the process to evolve, and let it be resolved. So, we were actually right there with a lot of other communities in the federates, municipalities, so I'm glad how this is proceeding.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor O'Toole?
Just to add to that as well, when it did come up to committee, there was a lot of serious discussion, varieties of formats that we could look at, and I'd like to thank Mayor Given for explaining that to the audience.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole?
Yeah, last one. Policy 806 Amendment, City Facilities Video Surveillance. Council approved the amendments to Policy 806, Cities Facility Video Surveillance. And to speak on that, the city goes through our policies on a routine basis, checks to see if everything is adequate to current standards set today, and maybe add or delete, and this is one one that we made an amendment to, it's regarding video surveillance in our building, buildings.
Thank you. Councilor Redburn?
And more specifically, the only change is that their wording is now City Facilities instead of City Hall, so that broadens the scope of the policy and allows us to move forward with some video surveillance at the service center. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay. I don't, is there anybody else in the queue? Anybody else wish to speak to this item? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Looking for one more council member. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I think that's enough.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. So, we'd move on to our additional agenda items that were added. The first is nine point five point one, Appointment of Weed Inspector for 2014. Can I have a motion? Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would, I'd move the council to rescind the appointment of Mr. Jeffrey Searle-Wanak as Weed Inspector, and appoint Mr. David Fast as Weed Inspector under the Weed Control Act of Alberta. We've got a couple of changes this year in terms of, but it's all for good reasons. This particular staff emerald was transferred or took a position within the city and other departments, so, and this person that we have is on staff as well.
Thanks, Councilor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Nine point five point two, Community Knowledge Campus Synthetic Turf Sports Field. Councilor Redburn, you going to handle that one as well?
Very pleased to, to make this motion. I would move the council award T-30-434-14, Community Knowledge Campus Synthetic Turf Sports Field to AstroTurf West Distributors Limited as the highest evaluated proposal successfully meeting specifications in the amount of $558,360, excluding GST. So, as Mayor Given referred to earlier, this kind of is the other final piece of that project. The initial tender award was to do a lot of parking and traffic flow and site, getting site ready. This actually puts the synthetic turf on that site, and so it concludes kind of that project. I asked, I believe, at the meeting in terms of this total of four and a half million that comes within our budget amount for that project, so we're excited, hopefully with the support of council, we can move forward with this soon, so that it's in as quickly as possible.
Thanks, Councilor Redburn. Any discussion or debate? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Then we're on to nine point five point three, Crystal Center Naming Rights. I wonder if we can have an introduction from administration? Jane?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm really happy to be here this evening and recommend that council approve the city enter into a five-year naming rights agreement with an option to renew for an additional five-year term with MJY Auto Sales and Leasing Limited doing business as Revolution Auto Group. To rename the Crystal Center, Revolution Place, rename the Boz Family Crystal Gardens, Boz Family Gardens, and rename the Canada Games Arena, Revolution Arena, for a total five-year commitment in cash and gift and kind of $520,000. The city has had a longstanding business relationship with the Revolution Auto Group as a client for the last seven years, and due to a variety of very fortunate circumstances we're here today, we had originally asked if they were interested in taking the suite for the Headley Concert, and it all skyrocketed from there. We laid out very succinctly the chronology of the events and how quickly this did move together, and we're looking at a total of $260,000 in cash over the five-year period, and a further $260,000 in gift and kind, which is inclusive of exterior and interior signage, changing the website, cell phone charging stations, purchase of suite tickets, again, very laid, laid out very succinctly in the report. We'll work very closely with the Revolution Auto Group to assist with the rebranding and remarketing of the facility, and the economic development impact of this move, we believe, will be felt, of course, immediately with the infusion of cash to the bottom line, and as well, the additional offer from our new partner, if approved by council, that they would work with us as promoters of at least two to three events annually, and any profit would be turned back into the facility. So, again, we ask that council approve this five-year naming rights agreement with the Revolution Auto Group.
Okay. Thanks very much, Jane, and certainly recognize the representatives of the auto group that are here tonight. I would look for a motion to get this on the floor. Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council approve the city enter into a five-year naming rights agreement with an option to renew for an additional five-year term with MJY Auto Sales and Leasing doing business as Revolution Auto Group to rename the facility as follows. Crystal Center would now be named Revolution Place. Boz Crystal Gardens would be Boz Family Gardens, and Canada Games Arena would be Revolution Arena, for a total five-year commitment in cash and gift and kind of $520,000.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redburn. So, open for discussion and debate. Councilor Tarrant?
Mayor Given, just a question for administration. At the end of the five years, would there be, would the intent be that it be brought back to council for review at that point, or is this going to be within administration? uh, would the intent be that it be brought back to council for a review at that point, or is this going to be uh, within administration's purview?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, typically when we renew uh, contracts, we do come back to council um, with, with the new terms. And uh, certainly would be our intention to do so at that time.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe this is the right step in the right direction. Uh, the company's growing. Every, every so many months, you're like, wow, where are they at now? Local company and uh, strong in the community, and I think it's a, a good step in the right direction. I'll be voting for it.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I uh, want to speak against the motion. It has nothing to do with the Revolution Auto Group. In fact, I know some of the individuals involved with it and have a great deal of respect for them. But it's always been my position in my political career that I don't support the selling of the name of a city facility to a commercial group. Now, I know it's happened in the past. East Link Center is another example of that. Where for a mere pittance of the amount of money it costs to build those facilities, or even to run those facilities, we give the name uh, to a private group. These are not private facilities. They are public facilities. They're paid for by the City of Grand Prairie, Grand Prairie taxpayer. And I'm just opposed on principle, so apologies, gentlemen, but I will be voting against this.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. Any further questions or comments, discussion? Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I uh, do want to say that although I think the presentation is great and the, and the businesses coming forward, uh, presented a great opportunity here, I do think that there's a lot more potential value in this facility. And I find uh, that the tender is quite low. I um, feel that going forward, our community has a lot uh, to offer with this facility. And uh, I, I feel that the tender, or sorry, the offer is fairly low for this facility. So, thank you.
Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I'm gonna be voting in favor. I think the uh, you might say the new blood or the uh, that's in the air may be a turning point in Crystal Center uh, by offering uh, opportunities that we haven't been able to necessarily afford or present in the future, uh, in the past, and that'll bring things forward. So, I'm uh, asking council members to think about this and vote yes.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
I have consistently voted against uh, naming rights as uh, Counselor Logan uh, laid out quite strongly. My views uh, reflect his as well. However, in this case, uh, this is not a brand-new building. This, to me, is exciting because it is someone showing their commitment and uh, optimism for this building. And for that reason, as it was built in eighty-five, no, ninety, ninety-five, for the Canada Winter Games. Uh, and so, that someone sees this sort of value in that building certainly reflects uh, my commitment to that building. So, I'll be voting for this one.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Counselor Radburn?
Yeah, just if I don't, I don't know if it's closing or not, but I'll uh,
There may be others. I certainly.
Anyway, I just want to speak in favor of the motion. I really think that uh, uh, we're moving in the right direction because uh, with the good work of uh, our business, Kim and Jane, uh, we've drawn to partnership that uh, I think will go of and beyond this, this five hundred and twenty thousand. I think there's some potential for some partnerships to make uh, Revolution Place an even more, a more um, exciting place to be and for people to come to. In terms of the amount, I think uh, we have to be realistic. There's a marketplace, and the marketplace has dictated this. We've been searching for a number of years, and uh, this certainly, I think, relative to our experience in the marketplace, is a good value for that partnership.
Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I'm not gonna repeat what, what has been said here, because all, everyone has made uh, great points or great positions on it. I am gonna speak in favor though, and, and uh, I guess in the same sentiments as everyone else uh, here has expressed in the renaming of it, but adding a little bit of a touch. Uh, I know that our downtown core is looking for some kind of revolution, and uh, hopefully this is a spark to that fire, so.
Uh, Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I will be supporting this. I think that it's uh, great to bring a little bit more uh, private dollars and to help us, helping us run a, a public facility. With that said, I, I do feel that it is uh, undervalued. I think that uh, when you look at uh, other facilities of this nature, you know, across the province, I think that they uh, command a little bit uh, higher dollars when it comes to naming rights. Um, so it's unfortunate, but uh, you know, in, in talking with administration earlier, I, I think that this is sort of one, one of the best deals we could get. And uh, I certainly thank the, the Revolution Auto Group for, for coming forward and, and being a, a willing partner, and I think it'll be a good partnership going forward. Um, and uh, you know, I look forward to uh, you know, in, in uh, five years' time, hopefully uh, things will pick up and uh, with the addition of the renovations here, that uh, you know, we'll have some great shows and we'll be able to uh, increase the sponsorship. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Tarrant.
Just uh, at uh, at my sentiments, I certainly support the proposal. Appreciate uh, Revolution Auto Group coming forward as well. Um, I think they're gonna be fantastic partners, and I think that uh, it really speaks to the direction that council is looking to go, as Counselor Thiessen said. The downtown core is a big focus for our council, and this commitment by uh, one of our businesses to uh, supporting that vision is, is greatly appreciated. Uh, I also want to recognize that uh, this is uh, the third facility that have had the opportunity to be involved in naming. Uh, and I have to say that we always, 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 every council that I've been on, think they're worth more than anybody's willing to pay. So, I, you know, I don't know what that says, uh, but it just has been my experience, and I, I thought that with every other facility, and it's just worked out that way. But having said that, I think that the proposal that's in front of us provides substantial value beyond uh, the financial terms and cash terms that are laid out. Uh, I want to recognize the commitment of uh, the principals from the Revolution Auto Group to being active participants in the facility uh, in the ongoing uh, operations, and their commitment to uh, helping ensure that it's an exciting place to be. Um, and I think that'll add a lot of livelihood and excitement to our downtown and not just to Revolution Place. So, uh, I'm certainly excited to vote for this and excited about the new opportunities offered by the name. Is there anybody else that uh, wish to speak? I think everybody had a chance, so I will call for the vote.
Thank you. That motion carries. It's one opposed. Um, and so that's been adopted. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Uh, we had uh, another one of our additional items, item nine point five point four, the Governance Symposium. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to move that council confirms our support for hosting a governance symposium in Grand Prairie on September fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Further, I uh, would move that council direct administration to apply uh, to the Regional Collaboration Grant to help defray some of the costs of hosting the event. Um, in speaking to uh, the motions, uh, it's been uh, council's uh, desire to uh, explore different forms of municipal governments uh, for the region, and uh, not just uh, for the region locally, but uh, for regional governments across the province. And we know there's a number of uh, interested part, partners. We have uh, other municipal governments uh, across the province. So, I look forward to hosting uh, this symposium uh, with uh, with council here, and to really exploring what uh, what the different challenges are and uh, what the opportunities are for uh, changes to municipal government.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate? Seeing nobody in the queue, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I believe we had one final item, Aqua Terra Board Appointments. Counselor Clayton?
I'd move that council direct uh, the mayor to support the two nominees as recommended for appointment to the Aqua Terra Board.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Uh, Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I'm just uh, curious uh, to know if the mayor has had the opportunity to uh, uh, meet with uh, or interview the possible appointments to the Aqua Terra Board. And uh, if not, uh, just in the uh, grounds of general prudence, shouldn't we do that? That being uh, the lesser of the other option, which of course is to have these people meet the whole of council. But shouldn't we do some due diligence?
Sure. Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Uh, as, as you know, council members have seen the uh, resumes of uh, the two applicants. And uh, this, these appointments will be made at the Aqua Terra Shareholders Meeting. Appointments to the Aqua Terra Board are by unanimous consent of all three shareholders. Uh, and so, uh, those types of interviews obviously aren't the Steve Graham Prairie's purview alone. Um, but having said that, uh, Aqua Terra does have a nominating committee uh, that vets these. Um, and then the process is being that the C A O and the uh, chair meet with them directly and then provide the recommendations to the chief elected officials of the shareholders, uh, who in turn obviously come back to our councils. So, uh, appreciate that recommendation, and I'll speak to the uh, chair or the C, CEO, uh, to see if there's an opportunity for us to add that uh, in future go-arounds. Any further discussion or debate?
Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, I believe that was the end of our additional items and uh, the end of our uh, pieces of business. Uh, we had no items of correspondence. We did have a number of delegations this afternoon. Um, the first was uh, the presentation from our H R department. We should have a motion to receive uh, those delegations for information, or if there's any other business arising. Counselor Rice?
I would move that we receive the presentation from our H R department and the uh, information regarding the award.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So, a motion to receive for information. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, our next presentation was, I believe, was from the uh, archives, the regional archives. Now, this is a piece of business that I believe has been, uh, at the committee level, has been referred to administration. Um, so I don't know if there's an action to take on their specific request tonight, or whether it's received for information. Just the council and administration have more detail to work on their specific requests, so. I'll have to counsel, but I would look for minimum of motion to receive for information. Counselor Rice, your next in queue?
Receive the uh, information, for information.
The presentation from the Regional Archives Society for Information? Thank you. Uh, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And then finally, there was a presentation from Mayor Manns from Aqua Terra on some of their upcoming projects. Again, look for a motion to receive. Counselor Logan, quick on the draw.
I would uh, move that we receive uh, the uh, representation from Aqua Terra for information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Sorry, we didn't, did that not come up? I'll call for the vote again, council. Yeah. There we go. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. Please enter your votes. Looking for one more, council? Thank you. That motion carries. And uh, that was all of our delegation business. We had no notices of motion. And council member reports, uh, the Grand Prairie Airport Commission. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, we're not meeting till next week, but uh, I do have an update on some of the projects and where we're sitting with, at the airport right now. So, uh, if you don't mind, I'll just uh, give you an update. Uh, runway twelve thirty, it's a rehabilitation project. It's a full length and wa, and width of the existing sixty-five hundred feet of the runway that has been pulverized and base work preparation for new pavement is now proceeding. Paving is anticipated to commence in early June, and the project is currently about ten days ahead of schedule. Uh, runway twelve thirty, the same runway extension, the full length and width, earthworks and greating is ongoing. This two thousand feet of additional to the north end of the main runway will be, bring our total length to eighty-five hundred feet and will accommodate any potential new service and or aircraft envisioned in the next fifteen to twenty years. This project is thirteen days ahead of schedule. The main, if anybody's been out to the airport lately, it's kind of a little brutal right now, but the main aircraft parking apron rehabilitation, uh, where aircraft load and unload near terminal, concrete panels removed, uh, is complete with drainage and base work ongoing. This project is approximately five days behind schedule due to weather, but is expected to make up time as weather permits. And uh, the total twenty-fourteen airfield capital works are scheduled for completion by September thirtieth of this year at a total of an estimated cost of sixteen point four million dollars. Just outside the airport, Highway forty-three in the airport intersection upgrade. This project is managed by Alberta Transportation. Turning lanes, base preparation is ongoing with traffic signal awaiting lanes completion. Weather has resulted in some delays. We have not been advised of any impact on the scheduled project completion of mid-July. But uh, this project is fifty percent cost shared with the Grand Prairie Airport and Alberta Transportation with a total project cost expected to be two point one million. And that's my report on the current situation at the airport, sir.
Thanks for the update. Certainly lots going on at the airport. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Clayton, you had Grand Prairie Sports Council.
I was uh, at Grand Prairie Sport Council on, what day was it? June fifth. I was very happy to bring greetings on behalf of uh, mayor and council. On that day, we had a fairly full room of different representations from different municipalities and different sport organizations. Uh, and it was the official launch of the website as well as the sport directory, which is an opportunity for uh, people who are looking for information about sports. It's a great website in the sense that you can go through and uh, put all different fields of what you're looking for. It's also a good place for other sporting organizations and events to register their activities, and it'll sort of be the hub for anything sport in the region. So, it was an exciting day. Things are launched and uh, things are, already there's quite a bit of information on there, so it'd be great for everyone to check it out. And the council continues to move very, at a great pace and bring uh, recreation to the region. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Logan, did you have a question?
I had a brief report, if I may.
Sure.
On the uh, uh, community futures of Grand Prairie. I haven't had uh, much uh, call to report on them in the past, seeing as they uh, proceed with uh, some action, but there's been a real rush of it in the last while with uh, four uh, uh, companies receiving uh, seed money or money and uh, to enable a business to expand. They're not necessarily all from uh, within the region, but they'll all be operating within the region. And uh, uh, I think that they do a very good job of vetting, and I just wanted to make that public.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Uh, next that uh, I had notification that we wanted to have a report was the Nighthawk Area Recreation Board. Counselor Clayton?
Just a quick notice, uh, the Nighthawk Annual General Meeting is coming up, June twenty-fifth at five fifteen at the Nighthawk Ski Hill. Uh, they are looking for, I think there's three board positions opening, uh, and so they're looking for a few more new members on their board. Uh, so once again, it's, if you'd like information, you can contact Nighthawk or myself, and uh, the A G M will be on June twenty-fifth at Nighthawk. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Uh, and next was the Northwest Corridor Development Corporation. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. It's been a while since the Northwest Corridor Development Corporation has met. Uh, part of the reason is uh, there's some issues with the B C partners. Uh, Northwest Corridor Development Corporation has been around for quite a long time. It was one of the instigating partners into getting the Prince Rupert Green Terminals on the go. So, uh, Alberta and B C have worked together to make that happen. Um, it looks like it's probably gonna be dissolved by the end of this month, and uh, there's a potential that Prida might take uh, over, and uh, it may morph it somehow, and this is uh, still some sort of in the air and not sure of the future. But uh, I'm basically letting you know that there's gonna be some changes with the Northwest Corridor in the next little while.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Just keep us updated. Uh, Counselor Thiessen, did you have a report that you wanted to present?
I sure did. Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, just uh, in regards to the library board, we uh, finished off our uh, last meeting before the summer, uh, just recently. Uh, unfortunately, it kept me away from the R C M P memorial, but uh, nevertheless, it was a, a great meeting. Uh, in that meeting, uh, Counselor O'Toole joined us for a tour of the expansion space uh, up in the library. All walled up and uh, kind of dusty and muddy right now, but it's uh, it looks like it's rounding into form, and uh, hopefully by the time we meet next, should be ready to rock and roll. Uh, we also met with uh, Mary Manick as well to discuss our plan of service over the next three years, uh, which is uh, excellent. which was an excellent Q and A session and our board, I think, is ready for the task at hand. We have a couple of subcommittees that are going to sit with her over the summer and then we're going to get to the hard work, developing the plan of service come September when we get back at her. And finally, just on behalf of the Library Board, I want to remind everybody that it is also the Library's 75th anniversary and there is still time. If you do not have a Library membership or if your Library membership is up for renewal this month and for the month of June only, we are renewing all Library memberships and giving out free Library memberships to everyone at that fun cost of F R double E exclamation point.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Now that I know there's an exclamation point, I'll make sure that I get down. And so I think that that handled all the reports from our external boards and committees. We'll start with Council Roundtable and Counselor Thiessen, since you were last to speak. Why don't you start first?
Sure. All right, well, let me tell you what I've been up to for the last month. I've attended over 30 different events and I'm going to touch on every single one of them here, make sure that we extend this meeting well past midnight. But in all honesty, I've been to 30 different events as well as I attended the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference in Niagara Falls, which was a wonderful experience. I'm not going to go into great detail about everything that I've taken apart in, but what I wanted to really take this time to talk about is the spirit of our community in Grand Prairie. There are three significant events that I went to in the past week that made me proud to be a resident of this fair town. The first being the opening ceremonies of the Alberta Fire Chiefs Conference. Ms. Jamie Arsenal came up to sing the National Anthem and I know that our American brothers who attended the conference were proud that we were supporting their flag and that we were to sing their anthem. And perhaps a mistake of the young, but she forgot the words about halfway through for one of the lines and she looked like she was about ready to break down and cry, but to the testament of every person in that room, they all started singing in unison the American National Anthem and everybody knew all the words. We got her right back on track and you could see she was just buoyed by that. So for to see an entire room of people like give it not only to our brothers, I guess our spirit of peace, but also to our sister who was up there singing on their behalf, that was a pretty amazing thing to witness. Another unbelievable thing that happened was watching the community play. Truly, this was an amazing event. It was called Century Play and I call it the community play because every member of it was a member of our community and most weren't classically trained as actors. But of the 80 to 100 people that helped make it come together, including Counselor Rory Tarrant, Mayor Bill Given, Jackie Clayton and everyone else that took part in that event, it was, it was a sheer success. They did get rained out one day and that was unfortunate, but the beautiful thing of it was is that they held it together, they didn't pull down any of their events and the community support for it was awesome. I was a little worried when I heard it was going to be three hours long and I was like, oh my goodness, I'm taking my eight-year-old to a three-hour-long play. Well, we sat through it twice, which is how good it was. It was an amazing testament to our community and yes, Rory, I didn't have anything better to do over there, but if I was handing out an Academy Award for acting, I think Counselor Tarrant probably would have got it. That or Jackie Clayton for her cameo appearance riding in on a horse in a red jacket, which is quite beautiful in itself. And then finally, you know, I just want to talk about Municipal Government Day as well. And that was the third and final topic. I had the honor of being able to emcee and give meetings on behalf of the mayor and I just wanted to once more say thank you to all of our community for coming out and especially to our staff and all the people involved with the city of Grand Prairie who truly made that event a record-setting day. And there were smiles everywhere and I'm still feeling the repercussions of those smiles as people compliment us on the job well done in serving our community. So thank you again to all of our staff and council.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Logan?
I mentioned two things. The first is the Municipal Government Day. I was able to be there for a part of it, but the joy of dental surgery kept me away from the rest. But what I saw was off to a very good start and I'm going to mention something that I didn't attend at all and deeply regret was the memorial for the R C M P members that were lost. I was out of the city and I was just so extraordinarily pleased and proud when I got back to see that our community had come together that way and kudos to all of those involved.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As well, we've tended a lot lately. The city is growing. A few I'm going to speak to, there's five quickly. We, F C M, was May 29th, 30th, 31st, June 1st, June 2nd in Niagara Falls, Ontario. It's a beautiful area in the country, never been there before and my kids have made the connection between Marineland and Niagara Falls, so I'm still in the good books. Building Canada Fund with resolution made, that's why we go to these things, unless they're elected, because we're very interested in how our country's going to look, our communities and our province. And these have resolutions and votes on and I was very proud to be there on that Building Canada Fund and asking people different questions. The second one is the R C M P Memorial Service for the three fallen officers in Moncton and Brunswick. That was a very sad service and it was packed to the hell. Total hall was packed, but it was a celebration of life and going forward, with footstep forward and communities have to go on and grow. So I've never seen Tracy Sergeant Hall so full. The next one, which too I'll announce because it's important provincial politics, we're creatures of municipal government. We met council committee the whole with Mr. Jim Prentis for the running for the Leadership P C Party. Indications are he's looking good. And then we also, I also met with Dr. Raj Sherman, Alberta Liberal Leader, last week and he had some good things to say. And the other thing I want to say, I bring up Municipal Government Day, I believe is the most well-attended one that I've ever attended to. And I've attended quite a few before I even became an elected councillor. I believe what our employees and people that do for the city is huge. You just got to look in the winter time when it snows. I'm going to give a special thanks to a lady who is going to be retiring, it's Audrey Kearney, and thank you very much for all her service and Municipal Government Day's been a lot to me. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Edwin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, I'm just focused on the last two weeks. We haven't met for a month, but I chose to focus on the last couple of weeks because they were busy enough. I just want to highlight a couple of things. I want to mention the 100 Years of Pioneers that the County and Grand Spirit Foundation hosted out at Intrex Centre. We had 200, 250 seniors there. It was a great time. I want to commend our, both the county and city fire departments for hosting the Alberta Firefighter Chiefs Convention Conference and also the firefighters had their annual conference, their association conference here as well. I want to recognize Oliver's Funeral Chapel and our Ministerial Association representatives for organizing time to honor fallen R C M P. It was 33 minutes and extremely well done and the participation from the community that Counselor Logan intimated about was very obvious. It was, as Kevin said, packed. And Municipal Government Day, I wanted to say that Counselor Thiessen did an admirable job as our emcee and kept things moving for the whole afternoon and evening, so congrats. And I wanted to do a special thanks to Audrey too for her good work through the years spearheading Municipal Government Day. And finally, I did, oh no, two, sorry, best bar non-program announcement. I wanted to recognize Crime Prevention and caring therapy and staff for initiating that program, making the connection both in terms of it is in Edmonton and Calgary now and we are going to be the third city in Alberta to have that program, but to set some standards in terms of service and how things should be done. And it seems like the uptake with our industry is strong, so I think it will have a very positive impact on that industry in our fair city. And finally, I wanted to also mention that Counselor Tarrant dominated Act One and did a great job. Thanks to all those who also helped, but Rory spent a lot of time working with that community production and it was very well done and it was an important part of our 100th year anniversary. So those are just a few of the highlights of my 30 hours of council work this past two weeks. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edwin. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a few things to highlight over the last month here. On May 29th, I was able to attend the announcement of the Tour of Alberta that is going to be hosted here, one of the legs of the race in 2015. And also this fall, we'll be hosting a commuter challenge where people will be biking between here and Edmonton. So that was great. I think it's going to be a wonderful event to bring some great exposure, international exposure to our community and look forward to being a part of that. On the 30th, I attended on behalf of the mayor, the, an event for persons with this event, developmental disabilities, sorry. And it was great to see, I got to meet the Minister Narish Bardwaj there and we got to have some really good chats about, you know, some of the supports for this community. And it was great to see a number of people from this community being honored and recognized for their extensive volunteer work in the community. On the 31st, I got to declare Jump Start Day with Canadian Tire and great organization. And then speaking to some of the members and people in the organization, they have an issue that not many charities have in our city and that they have overabundance of funding and they're not able to give out enough funding. So if you know of any children in town that are needing, you know, assistance getting into sports programs, there's lots of funding available there and they're more than happy to help them out. Also, on the 31st, I attended the book launch of Chineya Obia Julu, who launched a book called The Land of Honey, documenting, it's a fictional account of a couple that moves from Nigeria and makes their way to Canada. And from reading, you know, several chapters and from hearing some of the readings there, it's an excellent story and it's great to see the African culture celebrated here in town and it's great to have such a renowned local author launching the book here. For council and anyone else listening, you can purchase your book at Kohl's here, they have a selection of them here. Wanted to make special note, we've had several different provincial politicians come in to town over the last couple of weeks and it's been great to sit down and have some really good engaging discussions on the future of the province and future municipal government with them. So kudos to them for coming out. And finally, Municipal Government Day, I want to send a huge shout out to Audrey and her team and administration for putting on a wonderful event. It's truly a highlight of the year for many people and it's a great way to showcase the community. Kudos to Counselor Thiessen for a great emcee job. It was wonderful, well-received and look forward to great things coming up from the city. That's it.
Counselor Tarrant? Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There we go. I had the opportunity to be deputy mayor for the first time since being elected, so it was a busy six weeks. A couple of highlights that weren't already mentioned tonight. I was very proud to bring greetings on behalf of council and the mayor to the A M A School Safety Patrolers, so it's all the grade fives and sixes from around the area that do the safety patrolling every day to help keep the younger kids and all the kids safe in the school zone. So they get to go skip school for a little while and play games and stuff, so that was really fun for them and it was a neat opportunity for myself. I also, on the May 30th, had an opportunity to open the 20th Alberta Francophone Games. I attempted it in French and they said it wasn't too bad, so that was a great experience and I really enjoyed doing that. I also read the proclamation for Seniors Week and kicked off the Seniors Day barbecue at the Golden Age Centre. Recently, this past, two weeks ago, I guess, I had the opportunity to golf in the Grand Prairie Regional College Classic, which was another great tournament and I think they'll have their number shortly, but they raised a lot of money once again. And then this past week, on Municipal Government Day, had the opportunity to announce that Grand Prairie is the first urban municipality, so the first city in Alberta, to reach the $500,000 mark in support of stars. So that's a great opportunity and was something for us to be very proud of because we were there before Calgary or Edmonton or any of the other mid-site cities. So they were very happy for our support and wanted to, they wanted to send thanks to all of you and past councils for the support. I also, this recently, golfed in the Odyssey House Sunrise House Golf Tournament last Friday and I'm happy to announce that at this point, they, I am aware of that they raised over $110,000 on that day for both those two organizations. So that was a great success and as many other people announced today, there was the premier as well as many ministers were in town and had the opportunity to sit down with Minister Richard Starkey today and discuss opportunities in tourism and parks and sport tourism specifically in our region. So that was a great opportunity and a good discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just going back a couple of weeks, I was involved in the Innovation Conference Gala, handing out some of the awards and won't go into too many details, but Dave Fenton and Reg Isley both won their respective awards. Reason I bring up those two men is because I did take my apprenticeship through machining with them and I worked with Dave Fenton for over 25 years and Reg Isley, when he was just starting out with his world-class equipment, I was one of the guys that traveled all over the province, making sure that that stuff was working. So a little bit of a, yeah, a little connection. I did take over the M S S or EMS ride-along and the past years, Mayor Given has sat in the ambulance and not gone out on a call and, which is a good thing. It's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. This year, I broke that and we ended up having to take a patient transfer earlier that day and I also went on a call as well. It happened to be a false alarm, but I have nothing...
This just goes to prove, Counselor O'Toole, that when I go, nothing bad happens in the city. If you broke the streak, they had calls.
I had nothing involved with it, I just let you know that the staff that I was with pretty much all day, I have nothing but respect for them. They're very professional and that goes right from the hospital to the ambulance service to the air vac service. The patient that we had to take was from Grand Prairie, was involved in an accident earlier in the day and then needed to come to the hospital, get stabilized and then go out to Edmonton. It was an eye-opening experience and I have nothing but respect. Everything was professional and great. I was also involved with the Fire Fit Games. It was something that, three years of work to get them here, it was a success downtown association. People were there, there was six people deep for 300 feet. People were spending money at the stores and our local guys did extremely well. And I was the starter on Saturday and on Sunday I was headed out to Ottawa that day. Was also at the 100 Years of Pioneers. I also attended the PARs Appreciate, Pards Appreciation Day. Learned a little bit, that wasn't quite sure exactly what the Pards did, but I have a full understanding on the process and the people that they serve and the people that donate to Pards. It was a huge list of thank you sponsors. And once again, the Fire Chiefs Convention, I spent a few days there going to different events. Actually attended over 35 events since the May 20th, so that would be my report, sir.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
The Innovation Conference, I'll just speak briefly on that one of the 100th anniversary activities and I congratulate the Longmead family as a result of that conference. I attended the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. I also attended part of Municipal Government Day. It just keeps getting more popular and more popular. We doubled the food lines and the wait was still close to an hour, so it become a victim of your own success, I guess.
You owe a lot of credit for that.
There, thank you. Met with the Honorable Jim Prentis at that meeting and today joined the college luncheon with the premier and the college board, so.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. It is astounding the number of events that council is attending. It is absolutely incredible and I think part of that obviously is the 100th anniversary celebration and the additional events that are going on in celebration of that, but the city is just very, very busy. And so I want to recognize all the members of council for the amount of work that you're taking on, in particular the council members that stayed behind while the rest of council was at the F C M conference, who was during stomped during the Francophone Games and we know that there was a lot, so we certainly appreciate you stepping in and taking that for us. I won't go through any specific events, I just wanted to highlight for the public, a couple have been mentioned, but the number of contacts the council has made over the last, it's just a week and a half, two weeks, has been really, really amazing. Council has met with and welcomed to City Hall, or met with them in the community, Alberta Party Leader Greg Clark, Alberta Liberal Leader Raj Sherman... Alberta Party leader Greg Clark, Alberta Liberal Leader Raj Sherman, NDP Municipal Affairs critic Darren Billis, and then the Alberta Progressive Conservative Party Cabinet here in town, as was mentioned before, where I had a chance to sit with the premier and other members of council, many other ministers. PC Party leadership candidate Jim Prentis, and I also had an opportunity when he was in the city to meet with Thomas LeKesek, all in the space of about two weeks. So I don't know what it is about Grand Prairie, but I think word's getting out, and people know that this is where the action is. And it's good to see that council is making sure that all these people, when they come to our community, hear the Grand Prairie story. So I just wanted to highlight that for the community and recognize council for the work that you're doing to make sure that word about our great community is getting out, because it certainly is. With that, I'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Pretty close, Kevin.